Board to order. All three members are present. Chairman Crowley is here, I'm here. We have a new member, Mr. Towne, who was formerly the Superintendent of Schools of Edmond Public Schools. And he has been appointed for a four-year term by the Commissioner. He's the Commissioner Appointee. I'm the Judicial Appointee. He's the Tax Commission Appointee. Notice of this meeting was duly posted. And we're gonna follow the agenda. I see that we have present members of the County Assessors' Office. First thing we're gonna do is accept and adopt the minutes of the Board of Equalization on January 23rd, where we elected Mr. Crowley as Chair and myself as Vice Chair. Do I have a motion?
So move.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. We have before us our iPads, and we're gonna try to intelligently use them at our future meetings. But for now, we're up on the board. The next item on the agenda is BOE number two.
So that is gonna be Mr. Lewis Marcin?
Yes.
If you'd like to come up here and just take a seat.
This will be okay?
Yes, that's perfect, thank you.
Thank you. I'm learning something every day, all the time, so this is new.
Okay, that's okay. We're fairly informal here. We're gonna... Who are we here from first? Assessors? Do we get to take a lap?
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna hear from the assessor. When the assessor finishes, then we're gonna hear from you. Alright. Then, we will meet on Friday, and we will determine value on Friday, the three of us. Then, we'll send you a letter. So, Monday, Tuesday at the latest, you'll get a letter where we establish our value.
Thank you very much. I was sorry. You're here for the tax measure.
Okay, we'll hear from you first. Okay, so you filed this... We have a... We received your paperwork. And your property... You live in your property at 951 Carley Court?
Correct.
Alright. And the form that you filled out, the assessor initially, I think... Is this the one where you lowered the property?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. I have... I looked at this. And I think initially, your property was valued at 248, and at the end form of the assessor lowered it to 225, and you want it to be at 200, is that correct? Thousand?
Yes.
Alright, we'll hear from you.
Yes, thank you very much for doing me this. Two things happened that I really... I hate to request to ask a discount or lowering or understanding or help. I really hate to do this. I'm very uncomfortable to do this because, I mean, we just have to do what we have to do. Pay our taxes and what is due. So, and I'm really uncomfortable to do this.
That's right. It's... You're right, but let me explain to you that we set value. We don't set the taxes. The taxes are gonna come out of the Treasurer's Office. The assessor just sets value. The value of your property. Because, see, if you live in a certain school district and they have bond issues, or your city or county has passed some sort of a bond issue that will affect the actual amount of taxes that you pay, but it's based on the value of your property. So, the assessor has your value at 225. You would like for the value to be set at 200.
Yes.
So, tell me why you think it should be 200 rather than 225?
Yeah, I overpaid for the property, and I bought it for the 225. Actually, it was overpaid because it was in a bubble. The market was in a bubble, and I wanted to... I wanted the location very much, and so I overpaid like 2500,000, $25,000. And then, besides that, the property had some damage. The previous owners had some indoor pets. I didn't know because when they showed the house, the Realtor showed me the house, everything looked okay. But it was the odorizer was beating, hiding the pet odor also. All the floors, all the carpet destroyed. And even the walls. So, that was a big hit on me. The second... Well, a second thing is the northeast 23rd Street. Northeast 23rd Street. I'm on the corner, so right on the road, actually.
Yes.
Next to the road, I'm on the corner. And there is a quite significant noise, road noise. And interestingly, I didn't realize this until I moved in, that the road noise is there. Oh, my dear God. And I asked the Realtor when I was... She was showing me that. I said, "I wonder why is this property still not sold? The rest is sold." And he told me that he says, "Well, the reason it is not sold yet and still on the market because it's too close to the road." So, I think that is definitely negatively affecting the value of the house. Okay. Let me see, what did I put here in the... Yeah, and another thing is also contributing to this fact that I'm requesting lower tax is that my Social Security retirement is much lower than what I expected, even though I worked all my life, but I'm getting only 1,04500 a month. 1,04500 a month income. Because I was a manual laborer. I worked with my hand. There's not much space. So, the Social Security income is so low, 1,045 dollars.
Yes.
And so, that's where it's like a little hard for me to... The tax keeps going up. The price and the fees and the utilities is going up, but my Social Security retirement is so low, 1,04500. I even have the paper, you know, that from the Social Security, that determination.
What was the date? The date of your purchase?
It was in December...
I see it, 15, 2021. So, you've been there a year?
Yes.
And did you file your homestead exemption?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it's still not in effect. I still have to pay the full amount, like 3,000 some, I think. I don't know how much I paid last time. So, like 3,000 something, I guess. So, I'm paying my tax in time. I make sure about that.
Okay.
But I'm just asking this if we can take in... I hear you, man, what you say that you are looking at the value of the house.
Value, yes.
And I'm presenting it from my view.
Sure.
And I think if something will be granted in my favor, I really appreciate it. If not, it's not gonna be the end of the world. Eventually, I had to sell it and move from the neighborhood that I wouldn't like because I love the neighborhood very much. But anyway, so that is my point. And thank you for listening.
Oh, sure.
And I'm not comfortable to share this situation.
That's quite okay.
It feels to me like I'm begging for something that, you know, I want to... I want our government and state to be strong and effective and good. And I think, as I mentioned, that Oklahoma State, the government and offices are really good. I just love it so much. I keep boasting about it that Oklahoma is the best. You see, why would you say that? And explain it, you know, that you have the best government, the best administration and management and everything. The numbers are just the best. I don't... But I honestly say this. So, I want to contribute. I want to do my part as an Oklahoma resident.
Sure.
And to pay my taxes absolutely. And I do it every year. Income tax and...
Property.
And property tax and fees and everything. But thank you. If you have any question, if anybody has...
Yep. Is this a corner?
Corner, yes, yes.
What's across the street?
It is...
Here's a map here for you. So, he's... Here's the location right here.
Yes, okay, that's perfect.
Northeast 10th and Northwestminster.
Yes. Oh, we have...
And where's this house in that schematic?
Right here.
Okay, right on 10th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's the noise I'm referring to, that day and night.
Yeah, it's a major thoroughfare.
No questions.
We hear from the assessor.
Okay, so yeah, we do have a December of '21 valid arms-length transaction purchase of 225. We originally had him this year on for 248.5. We ran some comparables, and we showed that he did deserve to be lowered based on the analysis that we ran. And we decided to lower him to what he purchased it for in December of '21. Or December, yeah, December of '21. Because we felt that it was quite reasonable to put him at his purchase price. And he did file for homestead and senior frees this year, so that'll start taking effect in '24. But yeah, that's pretty much all I have to say about that is that we think the value of 225 is a legit reasoning to put him at and start from there. And like I said, that's where he's located. And the board has any questions for him if you wanna...
No, I was looking at the comps.
Okay.
Yeah, comps. Do you have a map of that? Where those comps are?
Yes, let me pull those up for you. It's kinda hard to see, but... So, the... I wanted to also address that. One of his comps is his subject property. And then, here's the other two right here that are right next... These two are next to each other?
So, we have 131 dollars, 118, and 127 square foot. Just left comps, okay. And his came out to what? How much a square foot? Well, it doesn't matter because it's his sales price. It's okay. You don't mind.
How much are we adjusting for the major thoroughfare?
Can you go right here?
Nope, I'm sorry, it's there. Point one, step up, please. Did you show Mr. Towne the map of the comparable?
Yes, here's the map. And here's the subject property. Here's a subject property right here. And then, further down over here on the other street are his comparable, other comparables, right next to each other.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll be on Friday, and we'll get a letter from us either Saturday or Monday. Tuesday at the latest. Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you for suggesting the right method.
Oh, yes, yeah, they'll work out for you.
Yes, yes, I like it, yeah. Everybody has a good day?
You too.
Thank you.
Sure.
So, our next taxpayer is actually gonna be by phone. So, if you're ready, I'll give them a call now.
We are.
That is your packet. Did you receive the email in the digital corner?
I don't get it.
Okay.
Where is number two in here? Right over the... From now on, let's have separate staples or something?
Okay.
Is this an LLC or something?
So, this is Cliff Eric Leclerc.
Leclerc, okay. Hello?
Hello.
Is this Mr. Leclerc?
This is.
Okay, this is Eleanor Thompson. I'm the Vice Chair of the Board of Equalization. How are you?
I'm doing great, thanks, Brett.
Sure. All three of us are here. The three members of the board. So, you've got a property, 5708 Monford Way, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The way this works, you can tell us why you oppose the assessment by the Assessor's Office on your property? Then, we're gonna hear from him. And then, we'll meet on Friday and come to a determination. And we'll, by letter, notify you of the decision that we make on what the value actually is, okay?
Okay.
Alright, we'll hear from you now.
Okay, so when I look at my property, I purchased the property at the peak of the market throughout the entire year. And property prices were obviously increasing in the beginning of the year, and they're decreasing in the backside of the year. And there was a lot of fluctuation, especially with everything going on within the market. It was just crazy. And because of the limited availability of housing, I paid more than what the house was worth. And I'm well aware of that. But at the same time, what I'm looking at is fair market value, and I believe that's what I should be taxed upon. So, based on that, I went ahead and did some research to figure out what my stuff is worth. And as you can see with some of the stuff that I provided, I don't have copies or anything in front of me because one of my pages disappeared. But you can see even my Realtor went in there based on the properties that are available and went ahead and did a market analysis. And price per square footage, my house does not compare to other houses that are out there. So, I looked at the product that was provided to me by the Appraisals Office when they did their initial hearing with me. And I did a comparison, going through what they did. And what I saw was they were using houses, one being 15,200 Southeast 57th Street, within the development. But the house was sold off to... Let me pull that up real quick. And this is my comparison, number five. Of that comparison, the house was sold off to a property trust at 490,000, probably due to somebody passing away on the cases. But the house sat on the market for six months, and then later sold for 396,000, which further devalues the overall neighborhood. But that's not how they identified the house within their comparison. They tried to use the max value of the house through a prior sale, which didn't necessarily match up. That being said, if you look at the Excel product that I provided, I broke down a bunch of houses that were comparable in like and fine within the neighborhood, within the entire year of sales. So, I did two that I found at the beginning of the year, and then two I found right at the end of the year. I did an averaging at the bottom underneath within that listing for price per square footage. Initially, based on the sales, I came up with an average of 149. And then, I also took those same properties and did a comparison of what the Assessor's Office reassessed those properties and provided a tax assessment for, which is all public record. And I took a new average, and it came up to 155 dollars per square foot. So, I assume if I'm in the same neighborhood and those houses are all around the same timeframe, that that should be a comparison. So, if I took my property and did a square footage calculation, that still puts me at 419,000 dollars. Which, if you look at what my Realtor provided me, that also aligns with exactly what I'm looking at here. But the Assessor's Office came in and it's putting me at 477,500, which is well above based on the square footage of the property I have.
Okay, let me ask you a couple of questions. Is this appraisal that I looked at, that's one that was done by your Realtor?
That was done during the purchase price of the house and the market was at the peak. But that's not necessarily what the house is really valued at based on the overall here. Because the market was in max fluctuation. And that's still... That's still well undervalued what I paid for the house.
Okay, but the appraisal was 450,000, was it not?
It was 450,000.
But you're asking for 419, correct?
Because I don't even believe that's completely correct either, but I wasn't gonna spend 500 dollars to get another appraisal done just to prove the valuation's not worth it. I'm basing it off a square footage.
And the date of your purchase was what?
I don't have that exacting in front of me, but I read on July.
July of '22, right?
That sounds right.
And...
June, May 4th.
Okay.
I have June 28th of '22.
June 28th? And the purchase price was?
465, it will be agreed upon.
And you do understand that fair value, fair market value is what a buying willer, a buying... A willing buyer and seller agree upon, would you not?
Correct, but I'm looking at across all the houses now.
No, what? No, no. Whoa, whoa, we're talking about your house and what you were willing to pay for it. And you were willing to pay 465, correct?
Well, I paid that, not that I wanted to, yes.
Well, but if you didn't want to, then you wouldn't, right?
Well, I think, yes, in a way.
Okay. Do you live in this house?
I will be living in this house in a few months.
Oh, okay. I don't wanna confuse... So, where are you right now?
I'm up in Kansas. I'm military, so my intent is I'm retiring as a military, and I'll be transitioning with my family down to the Oakland City area.
Are you at Fort Riley?
No, I'm not. I'm up in Kansas University. I work at the R. O. T. C. Department.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm from Kansas City, Missouri. Go Chiefs!
One thing in common.
Officially in the record now.
Oh, I'm wearing it out. I know. Okay. Alright, so you want us to value it 419. Okay, I understand that. Let me tell you how this works. When you... When we finish the hearing, we're gonna hear first from the assessor. We're gonna meet on Friday, I think I told you that. And we're... The three of us are going to set the value. And you'll get that information by mail. And I think on your... I don't see an address for you. What is your address?
8564 Primrose Street.
Okay.
That's Dusso, Kansas.
Okay. And is it...
66018.
Say that again.
66018.
Okay. Okay, we hear from the assessor.
So, yes, the valid arms-length transaction purchase in June of '22 for 465,000. We had the 2022 notice of values stating that it was at 403.5 before he, you know, purchased the property. He's requesting a value of 405,000. And the comps that he provided, we used in our analysis. Now, one of them that he provided was an invalid arms... It was an invalid sale in December of '22 because it was undervalued. And we recognize that as an invalid purchase. But it sold before that, May of '22. And we have that one on for... It was sold for 490,500 dollars. So, we do include that in the analysis. And then, like I said, we also have to account for market trend after the actual purchase date, so what that would sell for. So, we also factor in the market trend. We denied to have his value lowered at the initial hearing, but I wanna recommend that we can put his purch... Or lower him to his purchase price of 465. That's the far... That's the lowest we're willing to go in this regard.
Okay.
And then, if you wanna... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, great.
No, I just wanted to show you a map of where he is located. So, here's the... Here's the... His property right here. And he's off South Choctaw Road and Southeast 59th Street.
Are those oversized lots?
They definitely... They vary some. And some of the neighborhood is established, and there's other parts of the neighborhood that's expanding up north. So, it's in... There's different areas of the neighborhood. We have some that are better qualities. Some of them are... Qualities kinda differ from, you know, average and good and depending on what section you're in.
What's the average age of these houses?
Well, I know that the comps that we polled... So, he's... He's five years old. The comps that we polled are 3, 3, 6, less... All less than 10 years old.
Brett, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
You got any questions, Brad?
So, your recommendation is take it down to purchase price?
Yes. We originally denied to have the value lowered at all, but based on our further analysis, I think we should at least have him down to his purchase price.
So, unless 12.5, then?
Yeah.
477.5 to 6, okay.
Yep.
Mr. Leclerc, there's an offer on the table by the assessor to lower it to your purchase price of 465,000. Did you understand that?
I do understand that.
Do you still disagree with the 465?
I do still disagree with the 465 just based on the square footage of my property in comparison to the remaining properties that are out there. I just don't have the same square footage, and my price valuation shouldn't be that much different than other properties that's recently sold.
Okay. And you do know this is value as of January 1, 2023, right?
Yes, I can look at that and just state based on square footage. There was two properties that sold, December 27th and December 28th, 155 at 8 Court Lane, 5709 Ashwell Way. And both of those sold at a price per square footage of 156 and 143.
156. And yours is what?
What mine sold at?
Yeah.
Uh, let's see here. I had to pull the camera.
When it sold for 465, do you know what that was per square foot? Okay, so I understand what the market did last year, and people paid over asking price. But you're wanting... Um, let's see, 40 is 25.
Well, you're telling me based on the market.
But you're... But you're wanting over $40,000 reduction from what you paid?
That's correct.
In six months?
Yes, that's correct. It's based on the square footage of what the houses in the area are going for.
Okay. Anybody got any further questions? Okay. We thank you for your time. We'll meet on Friday, like I said before, and you'll be hearing from us, I would say, Tuesday at the latest?
Sounds good. I do, and thank you for your time if you're in my case.
Okay, now, you're up there with those thin-sitting j-hogs.
Yeah.
So, rock chalk, but I'm a wildcat, purple people eater, fan.
That's okay, I'm fine.
I know. Okay, we'll be talking to you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
So our third and final one, are we going to do it by phone or is that person here?
He is here, it's Mr. Moplin, if you'd like.
So you've been here the whole time? So you don't have this work?
I do.
All right.
I'm sitting back at time to find a shortcut.
How about them Jays?
I'm on your side. I know I may be slow, but I'm not stupid.
Okay, so your house is thirty thirty-one Northwest Seventy-third. You lived there?
I did.
Oh, okay. And tell me when you bought it?
I built it from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty.
And what would you like the value of this to be?
I'd like it to be at about two hundred and eighty-five thousand. Just based on the cost to build it.
And what was it last year?
Four hundred and something thousand, four seventy-seven. Oh, you're already starting to see the red flags. I like that.
Okay.
In twenty twenty, it was twenty something, it was, twenty twenty, it was... I think it was two hundred and six thousand. Two, in twenty twenty, it was two hundred and six thousand. Twenty twenty-one was two hundred and thirty-seven thousand. In twenty twenty-two, it was four hundred and ninety-one thousand. A little change?
Wouldn't it be cost?
Two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
In twenty twenty-one, you said it was what level?
Twenty twenty-one, it was two hundred and seventy, I'm going to round this up to two hundred and thirty-eight thousand.
And the cost to build was?
Two eighty-five.
Two eighty-five.
That's rounded out to some numbers, though.
And the assessor has this value to add?
Right now, four hundred and ninety-one, is that correct? Did I get that right?
No, we, the, am I forgetting? Oh, okay. For the, before anything was done, we had it valued at five hundred fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars.
Okay.
That's before any changes.
All right.
And you want, the new change, we lowered it to four hundred seventy-seven thousand five hundred. The twenty-twenty-two value at the beginning of the year was four ninety-one five hundred.
Twenty twenty-two?
Yes, ma'am, yes. Four ninety-one five.
And can you tell me about this neighborhood?
Yes, I will show you the map, or you wait?
Yes.
Okay. So it's an older neighborhood. He is a newer build in an established, in an older neighborhood. So if you go back to fourteen, all these na, he's...
I think I demoed the house in twelve.
So he built brand-new in an already established, older neighborhood. And as context of where we're located, you've got Lake Hefner Park, you've got Lake Hefner, and you've got Nichols Hills nearby. So he's on Northwest Sixty-third and May, between Wilshire and May.
He's south of Wilshire, north of Sixty-third?
Yes, ma'am, and on the west side of May.
On the west side of May.
Between May and Lake Hefner Parkway.
Ted's Mexican Restaurant?
Down the street, well, not Ned's is down the street, but Ted's is a couple of blocks away.
Okay, over in that area, okay. And the square footage of this house is?
Twenty-seven, hungry. That's rounded. Actual is twenty-six forty, I'm just rounding that up to easy numbers.
So have you been living in this house all this time?
No. I actually have another house I lived in while I was building this one. I spent five years building it. Actually spent three and a half years building it and then coasted it out to the end of that building permit, which is another year and a half to save the money from what property taxes would have been.
And when, when was it completed?
Uh, in about mid twenty eighteen, maybe towards the end of twenty eighteen.
Okay, so you've been in it for three, four, about four years?
I've actually lived in it three years. That would be twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, that's correct.
Okay, so then, so Mr. Assessor, give me the value twenty-one and twenty-two. Was it two hundred and thirty-eight in twenty-one?
So we'll go to twenty-one first. We originally had it on for, actually, I'm sorry, you said twenty-one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Twenty-one, we had it on for two hundred thirty-seven thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars, but we had it on based on the fact that it was not occupied.
It was not completed.
Not completed, not occupied.
Okay.
And my building permit was still active then.
And your building permit was for two eighty-five?
Correct. Uh, hang on. I think it was different from that. I think it was two fifty.
Those are just estimates, though.
We had it on, yeah, two fifty according to the website, So KC Permits.
And we just had one, you just had one permit?
Yes, ma'am.
Two hundred and fifty dollars, that's correct.
Did, so you, you tore, completely tore down the house and built a new house from ground up?
Correct.
Okay, so in, so then, January of twenty twenty-two, what was it?
We will go...
That was four ninety-one?
I have four ninety-one five.
Did you protest in twenty-two the four ninety-one five?
I did not because I did not receive one of those papers that says it changed.
Okay.
And when I called and asked if I could do something, but they said it already gone past the period that I could do it. So part of what I've requested for is an adjustment in taxes that gives me a compensation for about six thousand dollars that would have, that I will have already had paid, which would be...
We don't, we don't have anything to do with that. That's...
We'll just go back to that.
Okay, so, so then, now we go from four ninety-one five and then January of this year, were we at four seventy-seven?
Well, no, that's the adjusted value. We originally before any adjustment from May.
Five five one.
Yes, five five one five.
Them four seventy, okay, so that's where we are right now. And you want us to assess it at what?
I'd really like for it to be, I'm looking at a number that's realistic, which would be about, let's just go where it built for, two hundred and eighty-five thousand. That seems reasonable.
Okay, and on your notice where you were protesting, it says approximately three hundred thousand?
Uh, that, that works.
Okay. I don't have any more questions.
So you built the house yourself. You're not in that value that you're placing on it, you're not placing any of your, your sweat equity or anything like that, right? That you would normally pay for a contractor?
If you would imagine that I'm building a house of my own, that probably built it for maybe half of what it would have normally cost somebody else. But I can't put a value on it and I don't want to put a value on it. The two eighty-five is in actual out-of-pocket cash, including the land to build it.
So if you were to sell it at any point, would you ask two eighty-five or would you ask?
I don't know, it should be upstairs.
You'd ask what the value of it is?
Probably whatever the market in that area would be for that. The house right behind me just sold last week for three hundred thousand.
And what is, is it smaller or the same size?
It's about the same size. It sits on almost an acre of land, sits right behind me.
How old is it?
Uh, yeah, I thought you might...
Are you referring to thirty-one oh eight Northwest Grand?
Uh, it should be thirty-one hundred, I believe.
Okay.
Should be a Jack Pemberton, he passed away. I just know the girl that bought it lives next door and she said she paid three oh five for it. And I'm sure they haven't closed on it yet. And I've got a little more information, Mayor Mania Hill.
Great.
Did a survey of the neighborhood on my entire block. And that, I am almost double everything in that neighborhood.
Square footage?
Square footage, relationship-wise, it's looking like almost everything in the neighborhood's coming in about a dollar ten to a dollar twenty a square foot. That's based on the, on the...
You mean the dollar ten, you mean a hundred ten?
Well, I, I'm just, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I got...
That's all right. Did you give it, did you, did you, did you give him that information?
I think he's got this, but I'll give that to you.
No, I did not receive that information during the hearing.
Okay, but that's the whole neighborhood. I'm about twice what everybody else is in the neighborhood. And, you know, I'm just like anybody else. I'm just trying to build it, get into as cheap as I can because I'm getting towards the end of my life. Okay, so...
You do not have nine toes in the grave.
Was it six count? Okay, so next, I went down and had a conversation with them at the assessor's office and they gave me this sheet which shows the assessments of houses similar to mine.
Okay.
That are about three hundred thousand, that would be correct. And then the second thing they did, so this is the thing that they do to assess the value. There's not a single house in it that's in the same value. These are five hundred thousand, four hundred thousand plus. So there's actually no comparison to these houses to what they're telling you, they're praising it against. And to support that, these numbers show that the neighborhood shows that I ought to be about twenty-seven hundred dollars a square foot.
So we ran, the comparables that we ran has nothing to do with his neighborhood. The reason why we used the comps that we did is because they are similar builds, similar style, newer homes. So we can't use his neighborhood for any kind of comparables. Because it's an older neighborhood, it's an established neighborhood, so he's kind of an outlier compared to his neighbors.
What's the average age of the existing homes in that neighborhood?
It ranges quite a bit from forty to seventy, so maybe...
So we can't use those at all.
Fifty, sixty seven.
Adjustments would be just out the wazoo and it's just, we can't use anything like that. And so we, we used the properties that he mentioned to come up with a value that's even lower than what we had it originally at.
And those are showing up all over town.
Yes, and that's what we have to use because those are similar builds and styles. And he went on full market value starting in twenty-two based on it being occupied and complete.
I'm good, you got any questions? Okay. We'll set the values on Friday and I'll notify you by mail.
Thank you.
We understand.
Yeah, I know you understand. You're Jayhawk.
Oh, no, no.
I'm a chief.
I'm a chief and a wildcat.
I'm sorry.
Purple, my blue, purple.
I don't want that.
You don't know about the Kansas, Kansas State rivalry. It's like the O U, O S U rivalry.
That's really good. I'm really sorry to hear that that's kind of gone bye-bye. I like that stuff.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for your time.
Kansas, Kansas State is more like a bad little paddle for us.
See, I'm a surfer by nature, you know, football is in my game, but guys that got big waves do, and they really trip me.
And before we get away, have you applied for those exemptions that you qualify for? You had the senior exemption and the senior cap and all?
I have, and I haven't received, I don't, I don't know whether to receive any. I'm really trying to lock in so I can live the rest of my life.
Yeah, we, right. Senior, uh...
Senior freeze?
Yes.
And have this on top.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so that concludes the three items that we have today. Is anybody from the assessor's office? Do you have anything to add? Okay. He is quite competent.
You did well.
You did. Are you here to critique him because you...
I'll back you up.
Okay, thanks. That's, that's what I'm going to hear. He did, he did fine. I don't want to hear any complaints. Okay. Okay, anybody, any more comments for us?
Yes, we do have a few announcements from the clerk's office. So we received an appeal, I want to say yesterday, maybe it was on Friday, but anyway, he had submitted a day late. He included this note. He said, "I apologize for being a day late. My wife and I both contracted COVID early this week. I normally take care of these matters, but my condition was such that I couldn't get out of bed until today." So we wanted to see if you still wanted to accept that it was a day late.
I don't think we can. We don't have jurisdiction. It fails for whatever reason. Jurisdictionally, I'm sorry, I can't talk, that's why she's running this.
Can we hear?
As a matter of law, we, it may be, we all care about that, but there's nothing we can do about it.
Perfect, all right, well, we will take that off. We did want to make an announcement about the packets, so we'll check out your iPad. Do you, you already have your iPads? So from here on, the packets will be emailed to y'all digitally prior. You can print those and bring them in however you like. You can use your laptop, and we talked about that. But they will only be provided digitally to you. We just went through way too much paper last year with the packets, especially when, you know, a lot of those properties settled and we didn't even using the packets. So y'all should have all got my email of the packet about that. Disregard the notice that I sent for the March seventh meeting because of the election. We're going to reschedule that.
Thank you.
And then, right now, we've got, of course, March third, decision day, that's Friday on the agenda. We'll have that Monday, March sixth, and then March tenth will be decision day. I don't think I've sent out the agenda for that, but we will plan on decision day, that Friday, too.
Okay, if, if, if you guys are available, I'm available next Wednesday and Thursday if you want to, the one that should have been on Tuesday, if those people can't...
I can ask about that.
Okay. We welcome our, our new member. Yay, survived, he survived the panic salary.
We got a special exile Friday for nine thirty and then a decision.
Yes.
March sixth, seventh?
Not the seventh, disregard that one. Right now, we'll have the third, the sixth, and the tenth. And then if we want to schedule for the eighth or ninth, I'll email you all about that.
Okay, you're available? Okay. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
You can adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.
One down, billion to go.
So have we finalized our house plans here?
Um, can we slow?